Time is now seven o'clock. I'd like to call the people and ask you to join in saying the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will dispense with the roll call until we get a new council. So we do have some business to take care of. We have three new council members decided in Ward 1, Craig Romi, he's serving a two-year term, in Ward 2, David Burris, a two-year term, and in Ward 3, Ron Richards, serving a one-year term. I would ask if you'd join Misty forward and take your oath of office, please.
So if you will, raise your right hand. We'll say it all together, and then when it comes to the name, I'll just pause, and you go in order and say your name, and then we'll say the rest together. I...
I, Craig Romi. David Burris.
Do solemnly swear that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States...
I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
...to codify laws of the state of South Dakota.
Codify laws of the state of South Dakota.
And the ordinances of the city of Hot Springs.
The ordinances of the city of Hot Springs.
I will faithfully and impartially...
I will faithfully and impartially...
...to the best of my knowledge and ability...
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
...perform all of the duties of my office.
To perform all the duties of my office.
I will base my decisions on what is the best for...
I will base my decisions on what is the best for...
...the government and citizens of the city of Hot Springs.
The government and citizens of the city of Hot Springs.
And not on any personal gain...
And not on any personal gain.
...or not under any direct or indirect obligation to others.
And not under any direct or indirect obligation to others. There you go, yeah.
Congratulations. I have some paperwork to do here, and filed, so that might be light. If you will be able to take the work on file, congratulations.
Again, congratulations. We appreciate these individuals stepping forward to take on this important duty. Now we have some appointments to make, and the first one being in Ward 3. And I would ask, we had one individual that has put their name to come for Ward 3, and that's Caitlin Turner. I'd ask Caitlin if you... Or Ward 4, excuse me. I'd ask you to come forward and we'll make that decision because it's easier. And come to the microphone. And I just would want to ask you to tell the community and this council why you chose to put your name in the hat to be on the Hot Springs City Council.
Yes, sir. Well, I'm a graduate of Hot Springs High School. I love the community. I went and moved to Rapid and got my degree, but moved back to Hot Springs because I wanted to live here. I love the community, I'm very passionate about it. As a young person, I have a lot to contribute to the community. My background is in accounting, and I work for the county assessor's office, so I feel I have a unique perspective of how taxes are created.
Okay, well, thank you. Does anyone on the council have any questions for Caitlin? If not, I would accept a motion from the council as a second and a vote to accept Caitlin as the representative from Ward 4 for a one-year term.
I make the motion to accept Caitlin Turner as the Ward 4 representative for one year.
I second that.
So moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Welcome to the City Council of Hot Springs, Caitlin. If you'd come on up and take your seat. We do have also a Ward 4 opening, and we have, I mean Ward 3, I'm sorry. A little confusing tonight here. And we have two candidates for that. They have submitted their names. We have the incumbent who is Allison Ritterbusch. And Allison, I would ask that you would answer that same question, why you would want to be remaining on the City Council.
Yeah, you bet. So you should have gotten all my information that I sent in the packet that gave some of the updated, for those of you that have worked with me through the last year, just a refresher, and then for those of you that haven't met me, some information about myself. So I'm a mom of three kids, have been here for 20 years, almost 20 years, just celebrated my 20-year anniversary with my husband. We're both private business owners here, and really what I was focusing on was the future generations of Hot Springs, being that my kids are going to be raised here. And as an entrepreneur, newer, I'm bringing some of those specific ideas as to the barriers that our businesses run into, as being a business owner myself, and helping remove some of those barriers. So I just was working on, focusing on the value of our community and all of our families, and working together for collaboration and betterment of our community.
Okay, well, thank you, Allison. Does anyone on the council have any questions for Allison? Hearing none, Wes Grimes is also the other one who has indicated a desire to be on the City Council. Wes, I'd ask you to come forward to the microphone and... Again, the same question for you, why do you desire to be on the City Council?
I previously was on this council, two terms before. I was voted in by the people, so I guess I must have been doing a very decent job. I was the parks chairman, I sat on the public works, the public safety. I bring a lot of knowledge to the city of Hot Springs. Pretty much everyone here knows me. I mean, they know what I stand for. I can work well with a lot of people under a lot of different situations, and I also, I want to look out for the future of Hot Springs. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Wes. And does anyone have any questions for Wes? Hearing none, what we will do is, I would ask that the council do a write-in, a secret ballot, and we'll determine the outcome of this election. That way, as you know, when there is no one that does, come, the council does appoint. And Allison, you will be excused for voting because of conflict of interest on this thing. And again, we've got a public hearing at 7:10. That may be delayed because we do have some other business to seek the council before we can make that vote on the public hearing. Pass those down. Everybody notice I'm not taking one from Allison? We did have a close vote, four to three, and Allison is, will remain on the council. Wes, I want to thank you for putting your name in and stepping forward.
I want to thank Melissa for voting for me. Thank you.
Okay, now, I would ask that Allison and Caitlin step forward, and you take your oath of office so we can have a full council.
I, Allison Ritterbusch.
I, Caitlin Turner.
Do solemnly swear...
Do solemnly swear...
...that I will uphold the Constitution of the United States...
That I will uphold the Constitution of the United States.
...to codify laws of the state of South Dakota.
To codify laws of the state of South Dakota.
And the ordinances of the city of Hot Springs.
And the ordinances of the city of Hot Springs.
I will faithfully and impartially...
I will faithfully and impartially...
...to the best of my knowledge and ability...
To the best of my knowledge and ability.
...perform all the duties of my office.
Perform all the duties of my office.
I will base my decisions...
I will base my decisions...
...on what is best for the government...
On what is best for the government.
...and citizens of the city of Hot Springs.
And citizens... Wait. Is that right? Citizens...
Of the city of Hot Springs. And not on any personal gain...
And not on any personal gain.
...or not under any direct or indirect...
And not under any direct or indirect...
...obligation to others.
Obligation to others. Thank you. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Okay, we do have a full council, and again, I thank you, and it is time. Now, Misty, if you would get your paperwork together, please call the roll.
David Burris.
Here.
Ray Ecathy.
Here.
Bill Lukens.
Here.
Bob Nelson.
Here.
Ron Richards.
Here.
Allison Ritterbusch.
Here.
Craig Romi.
Here.
Caitlin Turner.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we do have a quorum, and the first item of business for this new council is for you as a council to elect yourself a president and vice president. This is a very, very important office within the council. In the event of the absence of the mayor, the council president takes those duties on, and in, at least in my operation as mayor, I rely heavily on the president and vice president of the council to coordinate activities that are going on within the city. And so I would encourage you, as you select someone that you trust and respect to hold this very important, these very important offices, I would open nominations for the election of the president of the Hot Springs City Council at this time.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to nominate Bob Nelson as president of the city council.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to nominate, have Bob Nelson as president. Are there any other nominations?
Hearing none. I'd like to nominate Dave Burris.
I'll second that.
We have a nomination for Dave Burris and a second. Are there any other nominations? Okay, if not, Misty, we will vote on this with a secret ballot. We have two nominations, Dave Burris and Bob Nelson.
Mr. Mayor?
And Bob Nelson is our president by a vote of five to three. So congratulations, Bob.
Thank you.
Next is voting for the vice president. Obviously, the vice president would take over in the event of the president's absence. I would accept nominations for the vice president of your council.
I'd make a nomination, nomination to nominate Allison Ritterbusch for vice president.
I second that.
It's been moved and seconded to nominate Allison. Are there any other nominations?
Make a motion to nominate Dave Burris.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to nominate Dave. Are there any other nominations?
I'll return the favor for Bill. Nominate Bill Lukens.
It's been moved and seconded to nominate Bill Lukens.
That was me, too. Sorry.
That's okay.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, I would ask that we have a motion that nominations close.
Make a motion to close nominations.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And again, we'll make this election via secret ballot. Okay, the vote came out, we do have a tie between Dave and Bill at three apiece. Allison had two votes, so what we'll do, the chair's option, is to go ahead and read vote with the top two candidates. So you'll be voting for Dave or Bill, and we'll get the ballots passed out here momentarily. And by a six to two vote, Bill Lukens is our vice president. Congratulations, Bill.
Thank you, I think.
And again, thank you, council. I think we had some excellent candidates and choices, and I appreciate your selections for these very important positions. Now that we have a vice president and a president and a new council, let's move on to adopting the agenda, please. I'd accept a motion to adopt the agenda.
Still moved. Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded that we adopt tonight's agenda. Any questions, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The agenda is adopted. And again, I remind each council member, if there is an item of interest, conflict of interest for anyone, on any item that we're voting on, I would ask that you notify the entire council prior to voting. At this time, I'd like to move on down in the agenda to the public hearing. It was to be at 7:10, but obviously we had to get the new council seated. I would ask that we open the public hearing at 7:23 to act on an application for temporary alcoholic beverage license from the Rotary Club to be used at the Centennial Park on the July 3th street dance event. Is there anyone here that has anything positive or negative to say about granting this temporary alcoholic beverage license for this event? Seeing none from the audience, are there any comments from the council? Hearing none, I would ask for a motion to approve the temporary alcoholic beverage license for the Rotary Club to be used at Centennial Park for the street dance on the 3rd of July.
Make the motion to approve a temporary alcoholic beverage license application from the Hot Springs Rotary Club to be used at Centennial Park on July 3rd, 2019 during their street dance event.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we authorize this, that application. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, new council, you made your first decision. Great. At this time, I'd ask Shelley Goodrich from Cato Thorstensen to come to the microphone. As you know, we had a earlier, more detailed audit presentation. Shelley will give us an encapsulated version of that presentation, and thank you again, Kelly, for coming down.
Thank you. Am I on?
Yes, I'm still.
Yes, thank you, mayor and council. I'm Shelley Goodrich, Senior Audit Manager at Cato Thorstensen, and like he mentioned, I was in earlier doing a detailed review of this batch of light reading that we have here, so now I'll give you a very high-level overview and field any questions you might have based on that. We came in and performed the financial statement audit this year. We did go through in the various different funds, and we verified the balance sheet accounts through the audit process. We tested revenue and expenditure accounts, walked through transactions, we inquired about variances and things like that. This gives us reasonable assurance as part of the audit, but not absolute assurance because we didn't look at every transaction that the city had for the entire year 2018. From an opinion perspective, the government-wide financial statements, those condensed ones that we looked at, have what's called an adverse opinion, and that's only because they don't include the activity of your component unit, the housing authority, but the other funds individually all show a clean opinion for the audit. We did have a couple findings and some journal entries that we had talked about, and we've worked through the details of those with Misty and talked about them with all of you, and we'll get a corrective action plan, and upon your approval of the audit, we'll be ready to finalize the audit. Or if any of you have any additional questions.
Does anyone on the council have any questions? Again, Shelley, we appreciate your being here. I think it's important that the council realize we have in the past had the audit finding on the Hot Springs housing, finding that they do their books later in the year than what we do, and we decided not to wait for that. That housing authority has been combined with Fall River Housing Authority, and so we will not have that on our books in the future. Shelley, I would ask one question of you, after you've looked at our, the way we do business and account for that, would you consider that our finances are healthy in the way, our methods in accounting for those, how would you describe those?
When we go through our audit process, we work extensively with Misty and the other department heads in the various departments and the various funds. We get an understanding of how the processes work, how does your day-to-day work? And we work through that process to figure out, are there any apparent holes there or areas where items need to be improved? And I think the lack of findings in the back of the report would be evidence of you all doing a good job in your various departments to have a handle on the day-to-day, how your handling is.
Okay, thank you very much, and that's, I think, important for all of us to recognize... Okay, thank you very much. And that's, I think, important for all of us to recognize and realize. Again, we thank you for being so thorough and coming down and looking us over. And again, I think a round of applause and thank you goes to Misty and our finance people for the job.
Thank you, on behalf of my team, and thank you to Cato. You've definitely helped me throughout the process when you provided account of services and now as our auditors. So it's not a terrible process, and we're very happy to work with Cato. Thank you. It's a pleasure to come down, so thanks for having us. It did feel like you asked me for every single thing that we did though. I get that a lot.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too. Next item on our agenda is, you do have a copy of the minutes from the June 17th. I realize some of you probably were not here, but we would ask for a motion to approve those minutes. They are in your packages.
Mr. Mayor, I want to upstate from this.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the June 17th council meeting.
I'll second.
Been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the June 17th council meeting. Are there any questions or comments concerning the minutes?
I would sustain as well.
Okay. We have two extensions. If, at this time, I'd ask all those in favor of approving those minutes, speak up by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The minutes are approved. You have in your packages bills in between for $135,744.21. I'd ask for a motion to approve those bills in between.
Make a motion to approve bills in between of $135,744.21.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those bills in between. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bills are approved. You also have current claims listed for $164,106.92. I'd accept a motion to approve those current claims.
Make a motion to approve the current claims for $164,106.92.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the current claims. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And for the, those coming onto the council new, you do have the opportunity to review these in advance with our finance officer. We typically do that on Monday afternoon prior to the council meeting. And I encourage you, if you do have any questions or concerns, please attend that review of those bills. Moving on in our agenda, we have communications from the public. Are there any communications from the public? Seeing none, we move on to personnel actions. I would ask for approval for personnel actions A through J and L through N.
I'll make a motion to approve personnel actions A through J and L through N.
Second that.
Been moved and seconded that we approve personnel actions, those personnel actions listed, A through J and L through N. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Will be a reminder that we will be meeting in executive session for item K. Moving on in the agenda, we have committee reports, administrative and finance. Bob?
The administrative and finance committee met today at City Hall. Mayor Cotty, Misty, Bill, and myself were present. We talked about surplus property available lots update. They've been following for a year. There was a groundbreaking ceremony last week recognizing old homes and old stuff from beginning to put the homes up on the Old Waterfield Station. So, thank you to the council for your support in that, and things are starting to happen. Peatling and sun mining, nothing new there. Still ongoing conversations with BLM. We've talked before, and the public has asked us, the council, about the University of Chicago Corner Lot that's for sale by South Dakota Department of Transportation. The city admin finances recommending that the city not consider pursuing the purchase of that property. 26th Street Water Distribution Project, there have been cost overruns on that project. We're still waiting on the final cost to see what the final bill will be to the city and the best way to take care of that. The mayor had a couple items for us. Tracy and Bob Quinn are in discussions about a demonstration project, potential demonstration project for cleaning out a portion of Fall River to get rid of the cattails. Try out an option or two to see how that might work. So we'll keep, we'll continue looking at that. We've also identified, and we'll continue to follow it, in Public Works, the wet well at the wastewater treatment plant is in significant need of repair, upwards of $140,000 that will be necessary for that. So we'll continue following that and see how we address that. In your packet, there's also a community access grant application for some roadwork. We've been talking about it in Public Works, as far as the road conditions in town. Last year, the council approved $50,000. 2016 for 2000, 2017 for 2018, they approved $50,000 for road repairs. 2019 budget had $50,000 in it. It's obvious that that amount of money isn't going to get us as far as we need to get. The street superintendent brought an opportunity to the city's attention for a grant for $750,000. The city's matching portion of that maximum. If, if the grant, the city were to see, receive the grant, it would be $150,000. So as we look at increasing our budgets to get road repairs taken care of, if we can get $750,000 worth of road repairs for expenditure, $150,000, that would significantly make good sense for us. We'll keep following that. We also agreed that to include the city's surplus property auction, to combine that with a county and a school. We scheduled a meeting for July 13th to look at the review of ordinance certification. They still have some questions for us before they complete that. And we set that for, oh, yeah, Misty, we set that for...
11.
June 11.
July?
July 11, at City Hall. So full council is certainly welcome to be part of that conversation. If you plan on attending, please let Misty know so she can get a notice of order out. We also talked about our nuisance ordinance and getting city trash picked up in some particular instances. So we'll keep looking at that. We've looked at just a normal overview of our legal bills, to make sure that they're appropriate. Keep following those going forward. Next meeting will be first, might be in August, 1 o'clock at City Hall.
Okay, thank you, Bob. Airport Advisory Committee, Bill?
Airport Advisory Committee met on Thursday, June 27th, at 8:00 a.m. at the airport. Present were Ed Jensen, Tracy Bastian, myself, and six members of the Airport Advisory Committee. On the agenda, we had some final discussions about the turnover of the fuel system. If you noticed in your claims package, the purchase price of that fuel system was there, along with, the city did purchase its first load of fuel, of which we also sold 1,000 gallons of that to Belle Fouch Airport. When we purchased the fuel system, it had a total of 832 gallons when they measured the tank on the day of sale. And out of that 800 and some gallons, only 400 gallons is saleable. So that process is working, and that transition between the seller and the city is progressing. I don't know if it's going as fast as Misty would like, but it's The hangars, we just got two new renters, so our hangar utilization for the city-owned hangars is at 100%. On June 11th, Ed, myself, and the mayor attended the airport capital improvement meeting in Sturgis, where we determined that this will not be the year to try to utilize grant money to build the 10-unit T-hanger that we've been talking about. Our portion of that would have been $45,000. Unless, until we get the peatling and sun mining revenues, that means the city would have to come up with that money. And that's just, this isn't the year to go forward with that, so we're just putting that on hold. So the one portion of our FAA grant money that we will be utilizing in the coming year will be for runway crack repair. I got schooled a little bit on, especially on airport grants, that if we did say, yeah, give us the grant, and we only went forward with the engineering, which would only cost us maybe $2,000 to $4,000 this year, in hopes that we would get the mining money to pay for the rest of the grant in coming years. Well, if that fell through, then we're still on the hook for the entire amount of money. So that's not a good gamble to pay, to play with taxpayer money. So we're backing off on the hangars for a while. Even though for the 10-unit hangars that we would like to build, we've got 10, 12 people signed up that want to come down here and park their airplanes. So, one of the things going forward, we'd like to put a little more form and substance around letting you all know what's going on out at the airport. So we're going to be working at putting together some monthly performance measurements or metrics, if you will, what's going on out at the airport. And so to start off with, I wanted to let you know that between June 3rd and June 28th, not counting weekends, we had 176 operations at the airport. And Ed assures me that for every takeoff, there is a landing. I guess if you don't have one of those, you have an emergency response in there somewhere. So we do have a pretty busy airport. So when you, if you count what's going on in weekends, we probably had well over 200 operations at the airport in the month of June. We had one live flight. We've had, fortunately, no fireplane operations in June. Again, we're at 100% hangar utilization. And we'll also try to get you an idea of how many gallons of aviation fuel, since we're in that business now. We don't, we couldn't get that for you this month, but going forward, we're going to try to have that number for you. And depending on where we land on the courtesy car issue, if we do end up with a courtesy car, we're going to try to track that on model money, how many times it was checked out, but how many times it was checked out for an overnight trip, which would be some indication that somebody checked it out, went into town and rented a motel room. So maybe not 100% one-for-one, but it would be an indication that people are coming into our airport and coming into our town and utilizing our facilities. So our next meeting will be Thursday, July 25th, at 8:00 a.m. at the airport.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Custer Fall River Regional Waste Management District, Ron?
Next meeting will be the 11th of July, 7:00 p.m. at the University Center.
Downtown Historic Preservation Commission, we do not have a council person appointed yet to that. I know the July 3rd meeting has been canceled. There's nothing to be considered on the agenda. Evans Plunge Advisory Committee, Allison?
Evans Plunge Advisory Committee met June 13th at 12:00 p.m. at the plunge. And the first item that was addressed was the janitorial issues that Tom Nace brought to us. They do have coverage right now. They're hoping to be filling one or two more positions because weekends are such a challenge. So that is going to be looked at and continued to be worked on. Joshua reported that we have a good life crew right now. They have a class coming, they had a class coming up on that Saturday, that they were hoping eight or nine candidates would be able to get certified. And Boden and Joshua were co-teaching that. He also reported his life dispatch is going very well. They're fully staffed at the front desk, and all of them have completed the Department of Tourism training. There was much discussion on the incident that happened at the plunge that you guys addressed last council meeting. And, let's see, summer rec wasn't really discussed a whole lot at the plunge, but I'm just going to add a little bit about summer rec. The swimming lessons are finishing up. They had a lot of WSI training take place, so we had some coverage that way. It was really good. I think our summer rec program went really, really well this year with some, we have just a couple weeks, Kathy, I see you back there, right? Couple weeks left, including pickleball and golf. And I think gymnastics are our last couple ones that are going on. So, good job. Kathy, photography was a huge hit, and I think we have a really good summer rec program. So our next meeting, we don't have any meetings during the summer for the Evans Plunge Advisory. We will meet September 12th at noon at the plunge.
Okay, thank you, Allison. Parks, Recs, and Beautification Cultural Development, we do not have a council person assigned to that yet. Planning and Zoning Commission, Allison?
Okay, Planning and Zoning met Wednesday, June 19th, 7:00 p.m. at City Hall. We had some communications from the public. Brian Baker came in to ask some questions regarding, issues regarding his road and access of 805 South 11th Street. There was discussion about the manhole cover, the ham radio shack, and who was going to be responsible for raising the wires. And what we determined is that we were going to continue, Tracy was going to mark some of the street, which, Catholic Way, which has been completed. And I believe I drove back past there yesterday and it's still up. So if you're, if you're questioning that roadway, Tracy hasn't marked. Mike Close had an accessory building question. Well, no, he was coming, doing his part where he was going through all of the steps to get that done. And there was no rejects and no conflicts. He sent all that information out to his neighbors. So that was an update, that nothing came back from those. Boulder Falls Business Park and Campground, just discussion at this point regarding Mockingbird and how they're going to access it. But nobody was there to really get any information on it, so there was no action. Just access discussion and waterway discussion. Airport zoning, there was some question regarding the ordinances, and that's been tabled from the last time. And I know Scott's been continuing to work on that. There was a question whether we needed to meet and have another meeting, but that's on hold for right now. The City of Hot Springs Old Armory Building, Rosalie is the individual who's interested in that, and she's meeting with an architect. And that was the only information. There wasn't exactly anything with that one. And the Fall River Hospital expansion construction, they thought that the completion date was maybe September or October. Our next meeting is July 17th, 2019, 7:00 p.m. at City Hall.
Okay, thank you, Allison. And just for your information and for the committee's information, should Brian Baker come back again? come back again, that issue is being worked in Public Works, and we have a tendency from him to go from committee to committee to try to get a different story. And Bob and Ray are working that with diligence, so I just want to make sure that that goes well.
Refer to Public Works.
And I wasn't at the meeting, so I could stick in and make that. Public Safety, Bill?
Public Safety met on Wednesday, June 19th, at 2:00 PM at City Hall. Present were Mayor Cotty, Councilman Nelson, myself, Fall River County Emergency Manager Frank Maynard, Fire Chief Dar McCoy. Sheriff Bob Evans was there for a while, and we had two members from the public. Under Old Business, under Follow-up Item 1912 regarding the impacts of the fire siren, Chief McCoy provided an update of how well the IM Responding System is working for the Fire Department. Though the system is being utilized and is helpful, it is not in a place to replace the siren at this time. Members of the committee will be seeking data to acquire an objective understanding of the impact on PTSD, folks that are suffering from PTSD when the fire siren is activated. And the committee will continue to review the issue until a definitive recommendation can be made. Under New Business, Chief Close provided a note that the South Dakota Department of Transportation would not be able to provide the portable informational sign on the Highway 18 bypass this year during the fireworks display. We'd like to remind everyone driving on the bypass during the 4th of July fireworks display to be extra watchful for pedestrians and slowing or stopped vehicles that may be taking the opportunity to enjoy the display. And also, we'd like to take this opportunity to remind the public of City Ordinance Chapter 9B, Fire Protection and Prevention Section 9.06, and the fireworks, which limits the discharge of fireworks in the city limits from 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM on July 3rd, and again on 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM on July 4th. Fireworks approved for discharge within the City of Hot Springs include non-traveling firecrackers not to exceed 40 milligrams per firecracker, sparklers, non-traveling smoke devices, fountains with discharge not to exceed six feet, ground spinners, and All individual use of fireworks shall not be permitted when the fire danger index provided by the National Weather Service lists Hot Springs as being high, very high, or extreme or any other condition beyond extreme. Assuming the fire danger stays below high, and we have the concurrence of the fire chief, we'll be able to enjoy our city-sponsored display again this year in the area of the Hot Spring, or the city shops that are along the Highway 18 bypass. And I think the weather's going to cooperate with us if it's not too wet to light the The committee also reviewed a burn permit decision tree that can be used by our police officers and Fall River Dispatch to help Hot Springs residences, residents, sorry, people that live in Hot Springs to determine whether or not the open burn is allowed and if a burn permit is required. Also, we attended a first review meeting of the Fall River County Pre-Disaster Mitigation Plan, and we are attending and participating in that as part of our commitment to the county to participate in that five-year review. And the next review meeting will be on July 18th. The committee also discussed the potential need to participate in a new dispatch and information system along with Custer and Fall River County. We will continue with information and coordination meetings in case that there will be an impact on the 2020 budget preparations. A member of the public delivered a letter of concern regarding issues on South Fifth Street and the Police Department follow-up of those issues. Mr. Chief Close was not present at the meeting. That letter has been forwarded to him for his action and follow-up. Other issues included in the letter that were not Police Department issues were forwarded to the City Administrator and Development Coordinator. A member of the public brought up concerns about people speeding on Evanston Avenue. Several actions have been taken to address the speeding, but the resident reports that it's still an issue. One piece of new information that was provided regarding times and events that seem to coincide with the speeding events is those being games such as soccer games or softball games at Butler Park. This information has been passed on to the Police Department. Meeting adjourned at 5:00 PM. Our next meeting, and this is a temporary change, will be Monday, July 15th, at 1:00 PM at City Hall. So that's a change, a one-time change from our normal meeting.
Thank you, Bill. And Bill, concerning the fireworks, I would ask that you'd be available to help advise myself and the crews as to whether we have the thing and coordinate with the Fire Department and Police on those activities.
Absolutely.
Thank you. And also, I think it's important that we make sure that we do have extra patrols out, and particularly on the bypass on Highway 71 and through Boulder Falls, so that people aren't blocking and blocking the streets for emergency vehicles getting through. So we'll have to watch that, too.
Yeah.
Okay, great. Public Works, Bob and Ray?
I wasn't available for the Public Works meeting, but I believe Ryan and Mayor did have a meeting.
On the 25th of this month, Public Works met at 3:00 on Tuesday. Members present with Tracy Bastin, Kim Barber, Mayor Cotty, Scott Selfie, and Deli Morrow. The first part of our discussion was on the old items. And when we talk about the old business, that we had 12 identifiable programs that were, projects that we're working on. We talked about the brush piles that we, you know, that we shipped up at Atlantic Hill. We talked about 11th Street project, 6th Street project, and a whole bunch, you know. And the resolutions to any of these ain't over yet. There's still other discussion. And hopefully, we'll resolve some of these old businesses. And some of them, finance overlapped on these projects, extra costs of the wastewater treatment plant repairs, 26th Street Water Project, many of these things have been overlapped by finance. And they all go together as well as planning and zoning. But we're still working on them, and since we have a new council, we might have some more help resolving these issues. Having said that, there was some asphalt street repairs, loading and unloading zones for the public, you know, for handicapped. All these positive things we've discussed. My notes are all over the place. New business, you know, committee members, I think we just barely touched on that, 200 Cardinal Drive drainage, and replaced gravel at street property, puddle on door and road. So that's about what all we covered on the last meeting. Our next meeting will be on Tuesday before the next council meeting.
Okay, thank you, Ray. Did you have anything to add, Bob?
Not the meeting itself, but driving around town, I'd like to thank all the city folks that have been involved in getting our streets spruced up again, getting the right colors on, and the crosswalks, that yearly project that they do about this time of the year. Plus, I'd like to thank everyone for getting Centennial Park ready. Our daughter, our granddaughter, her husband had one of the booths this year, so was down there on Thursday helping them get set up, and the crews around, and everything they could to spruce up Centennial Park for all the vendors that were coming in, and the tourists. I want to thank the city crews for helping out and getting that taken care of, look great down there.
Appreciate you bringing that up. We so often are eager to criticize, but I'm glad to say thanks, so appreciate that. Southern Hills Economic Development, again, we will point someone to that committee. Southern Hills Golf Course Advisory Committee, I believe the next meeting is next Monday. One issue that I do want to put on the long-term agenda for Public Works is we're having some water pressure issues when both the front nine and back nine irrigation systems are going. That could be an indication that we, we need to be looking at increasing our capability on the south and west side of town. Volunteer Fire Department, Ron?
Next meeting is 9 July, 7:00 PM at the House of Congress for Fire Department.
And the comprehensive plan, again, we'll be working on that. Moving on in the agenda, we do have ordinance, we have a second reading of ordinance 1200. That's our supplemental appropriation ordinance. And Misty, I know some of the council members were not here prior, can you give us a quick summary of what that ordinance is and what people will be voting on?
Thank you. And I apologize, the new council, when Karen put the packets together, I'm not sure, she usually when it's a second reading, they don't make the copies again, and I didn't catch that until I just saw Caitlin looking for hers. So you don't have it in your packets. I'll read it through if you have any questions about it. Feel free to ask. The majority of these items were approved by the future council. That's why we staggered the reading of the ordinance, since it requires two between the first and the second council, so you know they all voted unanimously for the supplemental appropriation. In our general fund, Highway Streets and Roadways has $91,00, excuse me, $9,100. That's in street and walk repairs and maintenance. We have three projects that were unbudgeted that were completed with these dollars that were considered a priority and recommended by Public Works. Our snow removal budget in the general fund, hopefully this will be your last appropriation for that this year, but it all depends on snowfall, and we had a very long, late, and heavy snow removal season this winter. So we had $10,000 going to salaries and wages, which are hard to estimate, and $4,000 going for additional gas for the equipment. In the cemetery fund, in our general fund, we had $1,200 going towards signs. Those dollars were transferred in from the 701 Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund. That fund in 2016 reached the point of $50,000 that it needs to hold on to, and any additional funds can be used for repairs and perpetual care of our cemetery. The cemetery board voted on this, and council approved this, and so those funds are coming from that fund, not just our unassigned fund balance like the others. Similar to the cemetery library found some additional money this year, they were given a donation for $5,000 to go towards books. So those $5,000 additional appropriation is paid for by that donation. They also received $3,650 in the form of grants, three different grants they applied for and received, also approved by council, the Stephanie Miller Grant for $1,000, the State Library Jump Start Grant for $650, and the Dollar General Literacy Grant for $2,000 is where that additional $3,650 in supplies for the library come from. Our solid waste fund, our council approved the chipping of the ginormous green waste pile at the city maintenance shop. This is our portion of the expense. We are anticipating a grant for the additional amount, and grant funds when received can be additionally appropriated by a simple motion of the council. So we are appropriating the expense from our unrestricted net position to pay for a portion of it, and once the grant funds are received as reimbursement, you'll have the motion to approve the rest of it. The Cemetery Perpetual Care Fund did not budget for the $1,200 that we're transferring to the general fund to pay for the signs, so you're approving that additional supplemental appropriation, and that's all that's on there.
Okay. I'd accept the motion to approve the second reading ordinance 1200.
I make a motion to approve the second reading of ordinance 1200 supplemental appropriation ordinance.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the second reading of ordinance 1200. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask Misty that you call the roll, please.
David Burris?
Yes.
Ray Echope?
Yes.
Bill Lukens?
Yes.
Bob Nelson?
Yes.
Ron Richards?
Yes.
Allison Ritterbush?
Yes.
Craig Romi?
Yes.
Caitlin Turner?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, that ordinance is approved. You have before you the Resolution 2019-15. That's a Community Access Program Grant. We need a resolution of support to help supplement some additional roadwork. We'd ask for a motion to approve that resolution of support.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2019-15, the Community Access Program Grant Resolution of Support.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Resolution Program Grant. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is approved. Moving on to new business, we have a possible motion in discussion to authorize us to accept the State of South Dakota DOT funding agreement for $97,390.08 to be used as a funding match for the Bridge Improvement Grant that we are using to help repair Jennings Avenue. That bridge is listed in poor condition. I would accept a motion to authorize that acceptance of those funds.
I'll make a motion to authorize the mayor to accept the State of South Dakota Department of Transportation Funding Agreement for $97,390.08 to be used as a funding match for the Bridge Improvement Grant, big for repairs to the Jennings Avenue Bridge, structure number 24-292-033, listed in poor condition.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded to accept those funds. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion?
I have a question, Mayor. He said to improve, but are they going to rebuild the whole bridge or just?
It's a reconstruction of the entire bridge. And one of the things that we had, our design engineer designed a very competent single span bridge to go across the Fall River there. That bridge design was not coordinated by the Corps of Engineers because it did not meet their design criteria. Our engineers used the FEMA 100-year flood, which is a typical design criteria. The Corps uses the 1907 Spearfish Canyon flood data to, to look at that, so we've had to invest some additional funds to get that correction made to the design plans. And I believe that is in coordination, and should be coordinated and approved soon, so...
Well, there's no specs here, so I just wonder, are they making the bridge wired? Or is it going to be the same as?
This is additional funds that the state has specifically allocated for bridges in poor condition. We've already been approved the big grant, which is closer to $2 million, $3 million. Our share of that, which is the 20%, is $420,000 roughly. This additional money can be used to help us cover that expense, but it certainly doesn't cover the whole bridge. So we're just choosing to use it.
That's not answering my question. Is it going to be a bigger bridge than it is now?
I don't, I have not seen the with plans to know to answer that question correctly.
Because it's pretty narrow. Because it's pretty narrow and far towards the central road.
I think we have the plans and I think it's similar.
Yeah, I think it is, but I don't, you know, don't have the exact length, but it is designed to the criteria. And they were aware of the emergency access, so... Are there any other comments? Hearing none, then all those in favor of accepting those funds signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. We also need to recognize and record the names of three suppliers that we used to purchase the seven thousand gallons of AB gas for our airport. As Bill mentioned in his report concerning the airport, we were getting down to fumes in our supply tank. We did purchase using World Fuel at three forty-seven a gallon, which is significantly lower than the price of three ninety-nine per gallon that I got about three weeks earlier than that. So, it's a good thing, I guess, that we waited. I would accept a motion to recognize and record those three suppliers.
I make a motion to recognize and record the names of the three suppliers and their quotes received for the purchase of seven thousand gallons of 100 L L aviation gasoline by the Hot Springs Airport as required by SDCL 518C6. Purchase was made with World Fuel at three forty-seven per gallon. Other vendors considered were MG Oil at four seventeen and City Service Falcon at, what is that, four oh seven?
Four oh seven.
Four oh seven is how it's supposed to read?
No, that's the way.
Four zero zero seven is how it's supposed to read? Okay, four zero zero seven.
Did you go out three and four places or something?
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to recognize and record the names of these suppliers. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We do have budget hearings coming up. We'd like to set the dates for July 30th and August 1st, those who begin at 5:00 p.m. with additional times to be added if necessary. I'd ask for a motion to set those budget hearing dates.
I still move.
It's been moved, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, it's been moved that we set the budget hearing dates for July 30th and August 1st to begin at 5:00 p.m. each day with additional days to be added if needed. Are there any questions, comments, or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion carries. We also have a motion and discussion to approve changing our Wells Fargo Bank of the West First Interstate Account Cards to remove Martin Meyer, former council person and vice president, to the newly appointed council president, vice president, Bob Nelson and Bill Lukens. I'd ask for a motion to approve changing those...
I'd make that motion.
Okay, it's been moved to approve changing the Wells Fargo Bank of the West First Interstate Account Signature Cards to remove Martin Meyer and add newly appointed 219, 220 council president, Bob Nelson, and vice president, Bill Lukens.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded, then to make that change, are there, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That concludes our business. We'd ask Misty for a financial report.
Welcome to the new council members. I prepare and present the following financials monthly. I encourage you to review these reports and ask any and all questions you may have related to them. Although municipal financing can be a bit overwhelming, I aim to make it as transparent and pain-free as possible. Attached to this memo, you'll find the following financial reports through the 27th of June. Please note they're not reflective of the entire month due to timing. First presented, you have year-to-date profit and loss summary report. This shows the year-to-date revenues and expenditures by fund. There are twenty-six different departments in the general fund alone, and they're all lumped together in this report. A more detailed breakdown of revenue and expenses by department is available at City Hall at Blue Binder. Thanks, Bill, for looking at it today, so I don't feel like I do that for nothing. Fund summary report is the next one. That shows you budget versus actual for both revenue and expenses. That will help you review how departments are doing compared to our plan or our budget. And same thing with the general fund being lumped together and more specific reports being available. I also provide for you a cash balance report. This shows the current balance by fund in our Wells Fargo, which is our main checking account. The balance at the end of the report, on the far right-hand side is the amount. We cool our funds, so that does break it up for you instead of just lumping it together as a total. Not all cash is spendable. If you have any questions about the differences, I'd be happy to go over those. And I also provide investment reports by institution and by investment type. This includes all the cash assets of the city. Again, not all cash is available. We have deposits on hold, debt service restrictions, statutory restrictions, and self-imposed restrictions on some of our cash assets. I also break out, we recently invested in some CDs. We're setting aside some money for some future infrastructure improvements. And so, I do break out from the investment report each of the CDs the city currently has by name. I list the term, the rate, the value, the maturity, and where it's at in notes for what we have it restricted for. In addition to the monthly financials, I also take a memo as an opportunity to highlight specific relevant topics. The 2020 budget is one of the topics I discussed in my memo. Thank you for scheduling the meetings. I have gotten out the budget Excel spreadsheets to the department heads, and we are planning to meet together before we present it to the mayor and then to the council during the budget meetings. I do highlight the 2019 Electoral Officials Workshop that's coming up in Pier on Wednesday, July 17th. It's a one-day crash course on local government. It's from 9:00 to 3:30 Central Time. I have one RSVP so far. You are encouraged to attend these trainings if it's possible for you and your schedule. Please let me know, I'd be happy to make the arrangements for you. And there are deadlines for the trainings for RSVPing. So, this time it's short, it's July 5th. If you let me know if you're interested, I'll get you registered. I'm also updating you on the compensation slash wage study that the future council or the previous council approved. We've been working with the Weston Group. On Friday, I had the third conference call with Patricia Doherty, and we believe we'll be ready to present something to the full council in the near future. The goal right now is to present a draft to the Admin and Finance Committee in the August meeting and then to the full council afterward. The city ordinances are being codified by American Legal Publishing, another activity the previous council approved. We have gone through a six-month process of reviewing. We now have the legal editorial report, which has been reviewed by our attorney, and we are putting our final look over it and answering the questions from American Legal on July 11th at 3:00 p.m., as Bob mentioned in his admin finance report. We hope to have those ordinances updated and available on our website for the public just as soon after we get that legal and publishing report submitted to American Legal. We talked about the airport fueling system a little bit already and several updates. And you're right, Bill, it's not going as fast as I'd like, but nothing ever does. So, I'm used to it. We are still waiting on switching over the software that communicates the pump with the merchant processing and also the merchant processing, which puts the money into our accounts. So, and then figuring out what we're going to do with the courtesy part. So, those are the last three pieces. There's been several steps taken. It's moving along fine. It just takes a little bit longer than I would like, you are correct. I do remind the existing council and want to communicate with our new council that a very important responsibility is the review and approval of claims. And thank you, George, for mentioning that the door is always open at my office to review those, all invoices that are presented. Need a certain criteria for us to present them to you, but doesn't necessarily mean that it's a done deal. So, please feel free to ask all questions that you have. I appreciate the questions here at the meeting, but more importantly, before the meeting, so I can do any research required to answer them. But I certainly don't mind any questions that you have. We do, we have passed procurement policies, and we try to follow state bid laws. So, there's a lot of different pieces that go into getting claims in front of you and getting your approval from them, but certainly a rubber stamp approval process is not what we expect, and all questions are encouraged. Thank you for what you do. We're so happy to have the new council members on. I appreciate your willingness to serve our community. We certainly couldn't do it without you, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Misty. As far as my report, got several things to mention. First of all, we're looking forward to celebrating the Fourth. We ask that the community celebrates safely, and looks like the moisture content will lead to a fireworks show. We're just hoping that we have some good weather and not a thunderstorm that evening. I want to remind the council, and I will begin with the chamber in reminding the business community, July 11th, Thursday evening, is a very important meeting in Rapid City called the STIP, the State Transportation Improvement Program Meeting. We have a very important project coming up, the redoing of Highway 385-18 construction through town. One of the things that the state DOT is seeing not to fit, to fund, is a safety enhancement of a suspended sidewalk along River Street. We need to make our presence known that we support that as a community and that we expect some funding assistance to make that happen. It should not be the community of Hot Springs' responsibility to provide a safe design for a highway going through our town. So, if you have any questions as to what we've got, what we need to do, please go ahead and see me. I'll be getting hold of the chamber, and hopefully we'll have some other community members there. Last year, we had an outstanding turnout. This past Council of Local Governments meeting, I met with, the STIP, people were there from the STIP office, and they still remembered the contingent from Hot Springs, the professionalism, and the good points that they brought up. So, I'd encourage you to be available for that if at all possible. One of the things that I would like to do is, again, also welcome each of this new council on board. I think we had a very important event this past week when we had a groundbreaking last Thursday for the Catton Avenue Lots. I think that it fits into a trend that I just recently read in an Economic Development magazine of things that are happening in America and things that we as small communities can do to enhance our growth. And I think that's something that we as a council need to look a big picture. And the first trend is what they call a brain game. And this is having young, educated graduates that come back to the community. We have one sitting here on our council tonight. And one of those, one of the things that these young people that are starting out in the workforce need is housing. And that's a very important thing. We as a city took the first step to get that done. We hope that it'll prime the pump and more houses will come. I think it's an important investment for our community because it allows those young people to come back into the community, make an investment that they can get a return on that investment as their families grow, but it also puts properties back on the tax rolls for us as a community. The second trend is changing retail dynamic, and we've recently been hit with that change. We've had our ShopCo store recently closed. I understand there was a big rush there the last Sunday trying to get those last-minute deals, and hopefully we can find some replacement for that. But the trend in America is that the internet shopping has impacted the Walmart effect even, and small communities need to be creative in developing retail businesses. And we as a city need to be involved in helping that. One of the things that we're hoping to do is to help local entrepreneurs, particularly in our Main Street area, by providing a gathering place, and that would be with the suspended sidewalk that we intend to have along River Street. We also need to work with our economic development communities to encourage that type of growth. So, the changing retail dynamic is impacting Hot Springs. We are getting some benefit. I noticed a piece on the local news about the income that we're getting from internet sales because South Dakota's beginning to tax those. The third trend is new travel motivations. We have an excellent opportunity to travel, to see accelerated growth. Ellsworth is going to expand substantially in Rapid City by accepting the B-21 bombers, and they'll be the crew training center for that activity. My wife and I, we're just married, but we headed out to California to go through that class at Castle Air Force Base in Merced. When we were there, we went to places like Yosemite on the weekends that we had off. Maryland doesn't remember that we did drive by Pebble Beach Golf Course and on our way to San Francisco and in that area. The point I'm making is those families be looking for a place to travel and to do things, and we have an excellent opportunity to welcome them to Hot Springs. Things like our MAMAS site, Evans plunge, new spas. And we have always been a tourist mecca, and it's important that we continue to support that as a council. Also, there's a fourth trend, and that's a declining distance, the cost of doing business. And that's being done as a result of the internet. Many people can be entrepreneurs out of their own homes or work at jobs for other companies simply online and on the internet. And we've had an excellent foresight from Golden West to lay down digital cable here in Hot Springs. And so, we have, hopefully, that aspect covered. And finally, a creative place making. And by that, I would match our parks in Hot Springs, our unique sandstone buildings, with any town in our region. People are drawn to the, this area. I just talked to some visitors the other day on the streets of Hot Springs. One morning, they were walking up with their kids and asked them where they were from. They said they were from Colorado, and they said, boy, it's so peaceful here. There's something about Hot Springs that draws people to it, and we need to take advantage of that. And that's part of the VA story. Had an opportunity to talk to one of the VA counselors. We were talking about their utilization of the golf course on afternoons for some of the people that are going through some of their treatment programs. And this one counselor shared a story that impacted me greatly. He said he had an individual that he took out golfing, and the first afternoon they went out, he decided to ride in the same cart with him. The young man never said a word the entire time they played. He said, I think I better keep an eye on this guy. And so, the next time they went out, the same thing happened. The third time they went out, they got to about the third hole, and the band finally spoke. He said, it's so peaceful here. It's so beautiful. He said, it's the first time that the tape recorder turns off. You see, he had experienced a lot of things that we, none of us can understand. But because of... But because of the atmosphere and the creative place that we have, we have a way to bring healing and to bring peace. That's our roots. And we as a council need to continue to support, say, the VA organization and ensure that we hold up our end of the bargain of being the veterans' town and healing people that are suffering, things like that. So as we go forward, I'd ask that you continue to help us watch the pennies, but more importantly, that we set a course for the future. And that realizing that anytime we move forward, there's going to be opposition. Right, Misty? You spoke about that with the fuel system. You're the face of Hot Springs. You are the leadership of our community. And I don't expect each of you to vote yes on every measure. But when we disagree, I expect that disagreement to be done professionally. And I would trust it be done with good reason. But with your leadership, we're all going to ensure that the best is yet to come for Hot Springs. And so with that, I welcome you and look forward to a very productive year of making Hot Springs move forward. Thank you. At this time, I would ask for a motion to go into executive session for personnel.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session for South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-21 Personnel.
It moved and seconded to go into executive session. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Mayor Cottick, will there be action after executive session?
Misty, please note that we reconvened at 8:36. I would ask for a motion to table item K.
I would make a motion to table item K.
Second, Matt.
It's been moved and seconded. We table personnel action, item K. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, motion carries. Also, now I would accept for a motion, a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
It moved and seconded, we adjourn. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed, we are adjourned. Thank you again.